And there's sudden silence.[19.14][19.14](Laughter) I guess everybody can read the clock better than I can.
It's anticipation of something.[25.11][25.11](Laughter)
Well, with all that silence, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Committee of the whole meeting, July the 9th. And the first thing is any declarations of pecuniary interest amongst my fellow councillors? I see no hands waving. So let's go straight to business. We have a number of, I believe, seven budget delegations here. And the first one on my list is Crime Stoppers. I'm going to presume that's who's sitting at the desk now.[55.73][55.73](Laughter) Wow, you guys are way ahead of me, I love it.[58.21][58.21](Laughter)
My name is Harry Patterson, I'm the president for Crime Stoppers of Simcoe, Duffren and Muskoka. And I have beside me Jill Richards, who is our chair for Midland Penetang, Tiny Cay, and Georgian Bay Township. So I'll let Jill do the talking right now.
Thanks, Harry.[81.45][81.45](Laughter) Thank you very much for having us here today. We are, I'm not sure if you're aware, but Crime Stoppers, we are a civilian organization. And our goal is to basically, we're a nonprofit, obviously, and we try to raise awareness and education that there is a way for people to help their community by reporting crimes in an anonymous fashion. I'm not sure if you're aware, but all the money that we actually pay out in tips is all raised by groups like ours, by volunteers. Before I got involved with Crime Stoppers, I always thought it was funded by the government or the policing boards, but it's actually us as the volunteers that raise the money. So just to give you an idea, since its inception, which I believe for Simcoe, Duffren and Muskoka, the group was actually established on January 12th, 1987. Tips received, just year-to-date, right now, so going from January till July, 2,476 for 2019. Since its inception, we've received over 63,334 tips. We've made over, well, because of the tips, 4,915 arrests were completed. And total rewards approved since its inception is $398,147 paid out to people that supplied information that led to an arrest. So we just want to thank you on behalf of Crime Stoppers for having us here today. I understand that you're considering us for a donation, so we sincerely appreciate that. It takes a lot of effort for us to raise any sort of money. There's a lot of deserving charities out there, and I think most people just figure we are funded by the government or the policing and don't really want to give to us, so we sincerely appreciate it.
Thank you. Councillor, any questions that we have of our first delegation? I see none. Are we tracking the names and all that of our presenters? Good, so, because I didn't write them down. That's great. Well, I've got to say thank you very much, that we appreciate you coming here. I know it's a long way to speak for only a couple of minutes, but we greatly appreciate you being here, and thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your time.[216.26][216.26](Applause)
Next on our list is the Georgian Bay Biosphere Reserve.
Good morning, I'm David Bywater, Conservation Program Manager with the Georgian Bay Biosphere Reserve. Thanks for this opportunity to come this morning and submit this request for funding. As you know, Georgian Bay Biosphere Reserve is a charitable organization. We're based out of the Perry Sound office, but we work from Port Severn up to the French River. We've worked with the township of Georgian Bay in the past on projects such as Amazing Places, which is an ecotourism project. And through this request, we would love to continue that work and partnership that we've done before. This is part of a new regional collaborative project on regional energy plans and community climate action, which my colleague Becky Pollack presented to you about last month. So following that presentation, we submitted this request outlining how we'd work together on community climate actions. So while this regional energy and climate action project is new to us, your township has been involved with Sustainable Severn Sound for a number of years on this type of work. We're proposing that we would dovetail with their work that uses the Partners for Climate Protection framework. We've consulted with Victoria Sustainable Severn Sound about the work that we're proposing in this request to avoid duplication and find synergies. This request fits with their approach to working with community partners to achieve the target reduction goals. So I can quickly outline some, the kind of four thematic areas. We had looked at work on local food, so community garden and gardening workshops, adaptation, doing some research and communications on climate resilient tree species and shorelines for the area, community survey to collect information on climate concerns and cost-saving tips. And then the other, the final one would be community forum. So green energy forum with speakers featuring different technologies. We'd look to use it at your Baxter Honey Ward Honey Harbor facility. And we would pull into some of the state-of-the-bay climate science information that we have for Eastern Georgian Bay, showcase some climate action success stories, a number of workshops on energy efficiencies for homes, buildings, so commercial and private, and then start to gather that community support for some, potentially some geothermal or solar demonstration projects. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Councillor, Councilor Yankel.
Is there an amount that you're after, Famas?
Yes, sorry. We've asked for 10,000.
Is that?
Yeah.
Councillor Jarvis, did I see you starting to raise your hand?
Over the years, I've noticed that, noted that a lot of the GBR presentations, activities are centered around Perry Sound. For obvious reasons, it's a larger population center, so I understand that, but for those of us in the southern part of the bay, it'd be more relevant to see a lot more activities down this way somehow, some way. I note that you do have some stuff in your proposing, presenting down this way. Is there going to be a greater effort to try and get more, approach more of the population down this way, the presentation is more locally located to the southern part, our municipality, so to speak?
That's a great question. Yeah, we recently went through a bit of strategic planning process, and one of those things that came out was more of a southern presence, so trying to get down here. Done some events already over the summer through this work, we would love to increase that presence in the work down here. And also, yeah, the other programs, we're also trying to get more involved down here, for sure.
Yeah, I'm not sure, I should have declared a conflict of interest in that I am a director of the GBVR, but I can assure you that that's one point that I raise at numerous board meetings, is to spread their efforts into this area. And I'm glad to see that it's already happening to some degree, and hopefully more. Any other questions from the councillors? David, thank you very much. Next on the list is Georgian Bay Forever. I believe that's another David.
Makes it easier to remember.[499.62][499.62](Laughter) Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, councillor. We're happy to be here today to talk to you about the Frag Mities Control Program. But first, I wanted to thank councillor for the support in our AUV launch last Wednesday in Honey Harbor. The mayor was there, and it went very well. It's not just the launch that was successful, it was the retrieval, coming back.[522.66][522.66](Laughter) Getting that $300,000 instrument back in your hand is very important.
And you managed it twice, I believe.
Yeah. So we're looking forward to deploying that to really accelerate the water quality programs that we, you know, used to do for council years back. But we'll, you'll really see some amazing results coming out of that machine. On the Frag Mities side, we're just starting to get our results in from the mapping, and we have expanded the amount of mapping that we've done in the township. So we've now pretty much covered almost all of the township. We are going up to Wawatezi and Big Davids Bay. We're going to look even in Tadnack this year, so we'll be going all the way up to 12 Mall and getting full mapping of the township this year. In the Honey Harbor and south area to Port Severn here, we've actually mapped out 275 sites. So we started off at 183 just in Honey Harbor, but now we've gone down Potato Island, Green Island, all those places too. So we do see a few more actual site numbers, but those sites are small. We're seeing about 80% of the sites now are less than 20 square meters. And in the sites that we've previously cut, the actual density of the stocks that's in those sites is drastically reduced, and in many cases eradicated, we've completely eliminated. Last year, our data showed that we had eliminated 23% of the sites of that 183 that we've mapped. I don't right now, because we're just getting the data in, have a correlation on what we also were able to eradicate year-over-year from last year to this year, but I will come back in the fall and have kind of that data and report to give to council. At this point in time, if you go to Lily Pond and actually look at the success of the truck source cutting last year, the 18-foot-tall complete 100% monoculture in there is now open water. There are some frag mities coming back along the shoreline, and we expect that because the land-based frag mities doesn't drown the same way that the frag mities that we cut in the water does. So the truck source can come in and actually drive out to the center of Lily Pond this year and get the rest of the stuff that's out in the middle that we weren't able to get to last year. So that is the plan. We do have two days scheduled in September to bring the truck source back. In the letter that I gave to council, you'll see that we're putting a request in for next year for $20,000 to continue that program, and we are coordinating that now with the MPED, the REED program that Parks Canada is starting on their property. And that's really where we're seeing the spread happen right now, is in the untreated properties down like Quarry Island and adjacent to it. We actually have about five new sites that have sprung up because of that one infestation on Quarry Island, which we haven't been able to get the truck sources out to and cut yet. So that's our plan this year, to work in coordination with the park. We will have more details from the park after we finish our meetings with the project coordinator that they have hired now for four years, so they do have a project coordinator, and they will be looking at Frag Mities Control for the next four years. So they've made that commitment, and they've got the money behind it. If there's any questions on the Frag program, I'm happy to answer them. It is a little premature, just because I don't have all of the data and pictures to show you, but I can tell you that when I went back after the AUV launch and looked at that Lily Pond cut, it was like phenomenal. Just instead of looking at 18-foot-tall frag, you're seeing a pair of mallards in that wetland. So we're starting to see the services come back. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Lily Pond is quite a pleasant change from the last couple of years already. Costa Cooper.
Thank you very much, David. Just a query about individuals looking after frag mities in their area versus not. It's my understanding that there are a couple of areas out in Georgian Bay that have been cutting frag mities in their communities, like Go Home Bay, Cogneshin, for many years, I think seven, eight years, that kind of thing. And now you're discovering other areas further down the bay, we had a lot of sites in Honey Harbor you noted, but then further around. What sort of attempt is being made to essentially get the residents to look after their own backyard to a certain extent? Can you answer that for me, please?
Yes, for sure. So the main thrust of our program is to educate residents on how to do their own control. We don't want to be the grass-cutting service necessarily, but we do a lot of that. And the major focus is actually giving people the resources and the information that they need to be able to identify the invasive plant at an early stage and control it as soon as it starts to show up, if it does, on their property. That program in Cogneshin, I should have mentioned, we're pretty much almost at 100% eradication in Cogneshin right now. And it's because of that continuous year-after-year focus that the community has, and the township's money does get spent up in that area too, with the students that we hire. We have five students that are out on the water doing that education program, and doing doc talks and stopping at everybody's property where they see it on the coastline. I think as we all recognize, and even in the back of the parking lot here, on this property, frag mities isn't just on the coastal wetlands or the coastal properties, it's also inland. And that's more the focus of the work that Severn Sound Environmental does, the focus of Georgian Bay Forever and the coastal program that the township is funding through our work, is focusing right on those coastal properties and looking at the coastlines. But that, if that stuff, just like Lily Pond, if this stuff doesn't get treated, it becomes the seed bank. And we also know, and we will be back to talk to the town, about a coordinated meeting with all of the coastal townships and the Ministry of Transportation that we're trying to set up at the Archipelago right now. And once we get that, a little, we've started to talk, I believe, to the township staff about that, but once we get a few more details on that, we really want to make a unified argument to the province to actually, you know, spend the money and get out there and do the roadside controls that you see all up the 400 here, so, yeah.
Just to follow up on that, and so I was very interested to hear what you had to say about what's happening in the community. It's been after it for a long time, because it shows, I think quite clearly, that the frag mities can be controlled. I think Go Home Bay must be pretty close to
Yes.
100% as well.
Yeah.
And so I strongly urge you and your team to spend as much time as possible getting residents out and looking after the backyard. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councillor Jarvis.
You mentioned the MTO, which I'm really happy to hear about.
Yeah.
And also our backyard, because I just noticed that coming in the door today. I'm curious, now I know that Parks Canada is onside with regards to Bozalay. What about the provincial government with regards to provincial parks? I'm thinking of Awenda, I'm thinking also about the Big Outer Islands. What about the native community as well? What is, what's being coordinated there?
So we have been doing education, Georgian Bay Forever's been providing the education to the provincial parks, and Massasaga Park, for example, also hired, I think this year, six students. I was away when the training was done, but Georgian Bay Forever provided the in-water training for their naturalists and the frag mities control. We've, in those training, other parks have come to Massasaga and actually, you know, started to see what the control program is. And we do have a ministry-certified control program that we did specifically for the provincial parks. They have that resource too, and Georgian Bay Forever prepared that. Yeah. I'm sorry, I should say also, we just got approached by Bozalay Island First Nation to help them with a community cut, how down Bozalay Island, or Christian Island, sorry. So yeah, so we will be actually working with First Nations to do that. Yeah. It's a pretty exhausting amount of work for a little group, but we're getting lots of community support, and we couldn't do it without the communities and with the township's support, so we really thank you guys for that too. And as you all know, the township of Georgian Bay was really the genesis of this whole program. It started here, and it's just expanded out and gone all the way up and down the bay, so we really thank you guys for your vision. Yeah.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
My pleasure, thank you.
Georgian Bay General Hospital.
I'm Nicole Craftcheck, I am the new executive director here at Georgian Bay General Hospital Foundation. It's a pleasure to meet all of you, this is the first time that I'm meeting all of you, so thanks for having us here. With me is Jen Russell, she's the Development and Communications Officer, and so she has much of the knowledge from previous presentations and felt that it was really appropriate for her to be here. So I'll let Jen start, and then I will go after her, and then we can take some questions.
So just, hi. So I just want to start really quickly, earlier this year, you guys were very kind to make a decision to donate some of the equipment from the Port Severn Nursing Station to the hospital. So in conjunction with the Hubers, made that donation to Georgian Bay General Hospital, and we're so grateful that we could accept the gift, and the equipment's already being put to good use. So as you can see from the quote from our Director of Patient Care, they have found homes for all of those pieces of equipment, so thank you very much. Secondly, I just wanted to take a quick minute. Previously, when we presented to you, there've been lots of questions around the District of Muskoka funding. So I just wanted to be clear that Georgian Bay General Hospital never received any funding from the District of Muskoka. In 2016, there was a resolution passed that GBGH was added to the list of hospitals eligible to apply for funding, but that wasn't going to be in effect until 2019, 2020, when the current allocations had been completed. And then in January of 2018, the District of Muskoka Committee of the Whole actually resolved that upon completion of their existing allocations, all the funds would, going forward, be dedicated to the Muskoka Algonquin Healthcare Centers, facility needs and projects. So these recommendations were adopted by council in February 2018, so going forward, there is no funding going to be allocated to Georgian Bay General Hospital at this time.
Just for your information, there's at least one district councillor where every single time hospitals comes up, does remind district that a good portion of their residents do not go to their hospitals in Huntsville and Bracebridge.
We thank you for that. So just wanted to bring this to your attention so that, because I think it does heighten the urgency for Georgian Bay Township. Your constituents are relying on Georgian Bay General Hospital for acute care, medical needs in an emergency, both seasonal residents, you know, up to 12,000 new residents in the summertime, but also your permanent residents all year round. And we rely on all of our communities to help to purchase the equipment that actually treats all of those patients who come into our doors. So just wanted to bring that to your attention, and I'll pass it over to Nicole to talk a little more about what's happening in the hospital now.
So we just included this pie chart so that you could see the breakdown, and as Jen mentioned, your constituents obviously rely on Georgian Bay General Hospital for care. More than 1,100 ED visits to GBGH were from residents of Georgian Bay Township, which equates to 45% of your permanent residents. North Simcoe, Muskoka also experiences significant seasonal variation in population, as you know, and so the demand on those healthcare services obviously increases during that time, including obviously the most being on our emergency departments. One of the stats that we have from 1617 is that the emergency departments in Muskoka subregion hospital sites experienced a 31% increase in both Q1 and Q2. So at GBGH, we have projected, just so that you have some stats for us, that on average, we see about 110 patients a day in our emergency department, and during that seasonal influx, we're projecting to be about 180 a day, so quite a significant increase on those numbers. So again, really important for us to work with our community partners to ensure that we have the equipment needed for our staff and obviously for our patients. So in this next slide, we just wanted to break down the emergency department visits by region, so you can see that amid the 45,000 emergency department visits, 3% may seem like a small number, but 1,135 of those visits from 2,500 residents is certainly significant. So we understand that US Georgian Bay Township is a large geographic region, and so therefore the difference between northern and southern regions of your constituency, and you must consider all the residents in your decisions. So for 34%, you can see from Actier that those services are going to go to their most close, close healthcare region, which is more Perry Sound, of course, for a merge. But when you consider the majority of the 66% of Honey Harbor and Port Severn, then those using that hospital, which is closest, is Georgian Bay General Hospital. So we want to ensure that we're equipped with the technology and tools that we need to service those patients. So two of the things that we highlighted in the proposal, actually three of the things, you can switch the slide, Jen, are some of the larger priorities. I'm going to touch more on the IV pumps, it is one of the larger projects that we have this year. We need 100 of them, it's hospital-wide. We currently have a fleet of 55, not enough to service the entire hospital. Nearly 90% of all of the patients requiring admission will need some form of intravenous treatment during their stay, and it's critical that these patients have updated technology for that. So the 10, or the 55 that we have are at the end of their useful life, so they require manual software updates and lack key information such as drug libraries, sending nurses to find this information manually in books as a resource. They require service often, the biomedical office is right near our office, and we're seeing IV pumps in there all the time, and so we do not have enough to service the entire hospital. The new IV pumps are equipped with a drug library, of course, and then they're also Wi-Fi enabled, so those pumps can be located easily, drug libraries can be uploaded and managed from a central location, and the total cost of that project for us is $440,000. The other thing that I will touch on is that we did put in the portable ultrasound for a merge, and we removed it from this presentation just because it is something that we have fully funded now at a cost of $70,000, so I just wanted you to be aware of that and for us to be transparent that we have funded that. The last part I will mention is that many of the municipalities have considered supporting us in terms of our most emerging needs, and really this, what that means is that if a piece of equipment breaks down, or we have to replace it, or we have an unexpected project, something, a fund that comes to us in terms of a general or undesignedated fund allows us to respond appropriately to those needs. So they allow us to use those gifts as required. So something to consider above and beyond, it also funds equipment, but it also allows us to respond accordingly. Can I just throw this slide in here, because I think it's appropriate when we look at cellphone technology 10 years ago and where we are today, and when we think of healthcare and the technology that we need 10 years ago versus where we are today, the innovation is certainly there, and I would want my children or my family to make sure that they have updated technology when they're being treated in the hospital. So again, in closing, we respectfully request that you consider a gift of $15,000, $5,000 a year for the next three years for the most emerging critical needs at the hospital or towards equipment, and we'll hope that you consider partnering with us to support the hospital. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillors. Councillor Jarvis.
I'm curious, because obviously technology's moving at a significant pace these days for all of us, as I'm reminded whenever I look at my cellphone. But what happens with all technology in hospitals? Do you guys, is there a way of recycling that? Just, I mean, this would be on the scope of what we're talking about here today, but I'm more curious than anything else.
Yeah, so I can answer that. In my previous life, before I was at Georgian Bay, I was at Soldiers', and so when we were replacing any type of equipment, the managers or the department directors certainly looked at ways that those could be recycled. Maybe there's a smaller healthcare facility that can't, you know, afford a brand-new piece of equipment, so they may take a piece of used equipment as well. And there's also, when they're buying, they can also look at the vendors, and the vendors sometimes have return policies that they will take the used equipment back and redistribute it. So sometimes, like anesthetic gas machines were given to vet clinics, something like that. So those are, they do try their very best to make sure that things get reused or recycled.
Councillor Yankel.
Although our township directly may or not have funded Georgian Bay Hospital over the last several years, SegBay, a chamber has, can maybe summarize their efforts over the last four or five years and what amounts of money that you receive from them? I think it's important to have it on the record.
Sure. Yeah, SegBay is obviously a wonderful supporter through their golf tournament. It started, I think, in 2014. The first three years, it was about $30,000 a year that was raised for the emergency department. And then in 2016, 2016, they started doing some adopt-a-room projects at the hospital, but it's been pretty consistent at about $30,000 a year since 2014.
And I think we're doing, doing that again this year?
Yes.
Okay.
See no more questions, thank you very much, appreciate your presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Severn Sound Environmental Association.
Good morning, your worship, members of council. My name is Stephen Waller, I'm the Chair of the Severn Sound Environmental Association. Being very mindful of your times today, so we're going to dive right into it. We have our executive director, Mr. Julie Kayley, who's going to run you through a presentation, and we also brought along an expert panel of scientists and accountants for all of your questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, your worship, members of council, staff and guests, for your time this morning. I just want to point out, we have Aisha, who is our water scientist, Robert, who's our invasive species expert, and partially because we're also doing an algae call after this, because there appears to be some algae things happening after this weekend, so we also have our treasurer with us today. So we've been your joint municipal services board since 2009. We're also your source protection authority under the Clean Water Act. What does that mean? Well, through the core funding that you provide, you access, right now, seven full-time, hopefully soon-to-be eight full-time, expert staff, from wetlands and habitat biologists to invasive species expert, a water scientist, an ecosystem health, a watershed health expert, as well as the risk management official. We answer to eight municipalities, so seven others besides yourselves, and we want a special thank you to Paul Wianco, your representative on our board as well, and your continued support. I just want to quickly talk about some of the programs that are ongoing. This is sort of partway through second quarter, end of second quarter for us in this current year, moving into 2020, and I'll speak to that in a minute. We continue with our tree program, tree distribution, which we thank you for. You offer an opportunity for pickup of tree seedlings for your residents that we provide at a lower cost. Community tree planting, we're always looking for new sites, so if anybody has a site, that's something where we look after the cost of the trees. It has to be a larger opportunity to put a bunch of seedlings in the ground. Risk management services and source water protection, we do that through the district for you under the Clean Water Act. And our ongoing invasive species project, I'll speak a little bit to some of the work that Robert's been doing on that, but really, some of the big things that have been happening include hosting a Eurasian water milfoil training workshop for Gloucester Pool cottages, as well as a Six Mile Lake cottagers association, and some other actions that we're hoping are really going to reduce the ecological and economic impacts of invasive species throughout the watershed. The field monitoring continues, the big piece of the work that our staff do. So open water monitoring for you, that includes North and South Bay as well as Honey Harbor. These are biweekly in the ice-free season collections. Been doing those here since 1998. Includes things like nutrients, metals, chemistry, algae, zooplankton, temperature, dissolved oxygen, conductivity, water clarity measurements, algae, like I mentioned, which we're going to be doing a bit of today. In 18, we also, on your request, looked at Macy's Bay and Oak Bay. We also do rain, air and water temperature monitoring. We monitor nutrients, metals and temperature on the Severn River at Port Severn. We've got a temperature logger installed at Bayview Dam. And I want to speak just quickly to some things that we're seeing that are a bit concerning, so some trends that lead us to think we need to do some additional investigation and make sure we stay on top of things, particularly in Georgian Bay. As we know, your population is very seasonal, and it's very important that water quality, both for your health and the health of your economy in this municipality, remain, water quality remains good, as well as your natural heritage, nature in the area, what attracts people to come here. What we're seeing is a bit of a deterioration still in South Bay and Honey Harbor related to water clarity and algae growth, so increasing algae growth. South Bay, we're still seeing phosphorus issues. We are seeing relatively lower-than-average chlorophyll indicators of algal biomass, but we are also seeing some dissolved oxygen issues. I believe Honey Harbor and Aisha will grit her teeth if I'm wrong, was one of the few that was still meeting our targets from our remedial action plan days. So things that certainly need to be kept on top of, and like I mentioned, particularly after the warmer weather, the sun and no wind, we're seeing algae blooms happening, particularly upstream here in places like Gloucester Pool. Macy's Bay and Oak Bay, the work we did there certainly have not shown any significant water quality issues. They're pretty comparable to the rest of our sites. And we did support some Georgian College students who were doing work on water quality survey on Little Lake and Gloucester Pool, as well as Bastrel Lake in 2018, and found that, again, water quality was fairly good, including lower phosphorus concentrations than we had originally expected in those areas. So something we don't think is a significant input to South Bay, for example. So more research into where, what is the issue in South Bay. And in terms of the tributary monitoring on the Severn River, we're not seeing a change in total phosphorus, which is a good thing, but like all other tributaries across the province, we are seeing increasing chloride concentrations. Work plan items moving into 20, well, I have this slide for 2019-20, because we're certainly only partway into our 2019 year, but into 2020 as well. Really looking at state of water quality reporting, working with you, your staff, our science, support experts at Ministry of Environment, Conservation and Parks, determine why these changes are happening, why we're seeing some changes in trends. We certainly are working with the same partners currently, particularly Ministry of Environment, Conservation and Parks. They're challenged in terms of their staffing and have reached out to us yesterday, actually, to make sure that we can help support some of these algae sampling and investigations. So we do initial ID, and we can help them on collecting samples as well, to make sure that we're not running into problems with toxic algae blooms. Engaging residents in cottages, like I mentioned, and actions around invasive species identification and best practices, so looking to do more training and identification and management workshops. I'm sure Robert doesn't mind getting out on the lakes to do some of that, not a bad job. Source water protection, still doing risk management services and working, looking to work with your municipality as you've identified Honey Harbor potable water concerns and possible municipal solution to that. So under source protection, your municipal drinking water is something we help look after. In response to increasing pressures on water quality, we held a stormwater low-impact development workshop that was no cost to our municipalities. Thank you very much to councillor Douglas, who attended, and some staff I know attended as well, and we really appreciate it, having a great turnout for that, and we were, within our own staff, really excited about some of the information that came up there as well. So looking at the 2020 request, in our 2018 strategic plan that we spoke to you about last year, as staff, we really had identified the potential areas of weakness within our organization and the need for financial sustainability over the longer term, and ensuring that we're not taking you, our municipal partners, under our municipal services board into a position of high risk, and that means making sure we're not creating a deficit as we're moving forward. The board direction was to create a new five-year financial plan, which we've done and you have in front of you. I want to point out, both the financial, the five-year plan as well as the 2020 request are both in draft. Those are going to our board July 18th. So the executive has directed us to bring what you have in front of you to you today. So really, for us, it's looking at fiscal responsibility, making sure as our costs continue to rise, that includes things like fuel, a vehicle that's on its last legs, increasing rent, our IT costs, the need for addressing our financial risks, so equipment needs to be replaced. The wells that we monitor could require decommissioning down the road. We need to be prepared to pay those costs. And increasing our services while there's just decreasing provincial government support. So things like source water protection, which we've been told this will be the last year the province supports that program across Ontario, so that'll be something that then has to, the money for that will have to be found within our municipalities as well. Increasing the need for communication, that's also something that's been identified. Bringing sustainable Severn Sound into the fold, another thing that has been identified by you, our partners, as something that you think would reduce some confusion around what our two organizations do. And continuing to move forward with the stormwater management piece. Certainly, as we see more and more development, we impact the landscape more. We know that we need to be thinking about different ways to develop so that we're not continuing to see increases in pressure on our water quality. I'm going to leave it at that and just say thank you very much. Really, the success that's happened in Severn Sound since it was a remedial action plan in the early days is really because of the municipal support and the community support. I also want to just leave you with a quick note. Yesterday, the province and the federal government released an opportunity to comment on the Canada-Ontario Agreement respecting Great Lakes water quality. We've, I guess, had thought that might happen, so we had already sent some comments in, which we have provided to our board yesterday, but we'll be doing another set of comments to ensure that they understand that even once an area is delisted like Severn Sound, resourcing has to continue to make sure that you don't go back to the way the challenges were. So we'll certainly be doing that to both federal and provincial government, and I will leave it at that. Thank you, and I think Stephen and I can answer some questions, if you have any.
Thank you very much. councillor Hazelton.
Thanks very much for your presentation. I have a few questions, if you don't mind. You indicated that you're concerned with some of the trends of water quality going in South Bay. I noticed you've got a lot of sampling going on in North Bay as well. Severn Sound has a history of remedial action. We have known in our community since the 90s that we have serious water quality problems, phosphorus loading issues in South Bay, for example. How do we move from a sampling strategy to a remedial strategy in South Bay? And I think you're going to find that North Bay is probably not far off the mark, so that's kind of the first question. How do we shift from this focus on testing to, okay, we've known for 20 years that we have a problem here, well-documented, I don't know what the cause is, maybe that's needing more testing, but how do we move from that to remedial action?
Thank you, through your worship. That's an excellent question, and I certainly don't want to sound like a researcher and say we just need more testing. You're right, we need some action around that. I would suggest that probably our water scientist, Ministry of Environment, in the past few years has done some other work up in this area, and we're waiting on some of those results to work with them to say, are we seeing possibly where some of those trends are coming from and what the impacts potentially could be, so that we can start working on. So is there a stewardship strategy? What is the strategy we need to move forward with? So I also think some of the comments we'll be putting back to the provincial and federal government is, again, you can't step away from a Great Lake and assume, once that remedial actions have taken place, that those are good forever, that they need to be resourcing to look at actions to make sure that we're moving forward in a positive way.
So how do we, how do we work with you to move towards remedial action strategies in South Bay? Because I'd say we've studied it for a couple of decades, and we know that it's a problem, but we aren't doing anything to fix it, and I'm, that's a little frustrating. I'm just trying to figure out, how do we transition away from what we've been doing to do something that fixes the problem, just like Severn Sound was fixed?
Through your worship, you know, I would suggest we could sit down with you with our water scientists. Again, once we've had some, a chance to look at what Ministry of Environment's data is showing from the last couple of years, they've done some more detailed work, and speak about what we collectively think from being, you know, some of you are on that landscape and can probably speak better to what you think some of the issues might be that we want to address, and pull a group together. You used to have a water quality committee, which I don't believe has met in a year or more, but we'd be happy to sit down with any of you and have some of that conversation and get that action plan started.
Okay, thank you. Just as clarification, it was a water quality testing committee, and I think the issue is, we're kind of tired of testing. We want to find a way to move to remedial action, so there's kind of less focus and interest in testing and more interest in how do we transition away. But let me shift gears just one little bit. You mentioned that you've noticed a significant growth in algae, and you're concerned with algae or algal blooms and so on. Could you help us understand what our residents in our community could do to remediate algal blooms? And for example, in the wetlands, certainly in North Bay, I haven't looked at them so much in South Bay, but for whatever reason, this year, algal blooms and algal growth and masses are way more significant in the wetlands than they have been in previous years. I'm guessing it's a function of less wind, hotter water, for whatever reason, haven't had a lot of sun, but the water's hot. But how do we fix these things?
Thank you, through your worship. I could bring Aisha up, and we could have a big conversation about that. You're right on some of those pressures, as well as nutrient load, right? Algae needs a nutrient to grow, so part of the challenge is, we're all part of the problem, right? Our inputs from a nutrient standpoint on the landscape as people certainly put those pressures on our watersheds. Two things I think people could be doing, and one is, we can provide some resources around how to manage your shoreline or the way you're living on the landscape to try to reduce your inputs, but also to be watching for those blooms. So one of the things is, if it's a true cyanobacteria algae bloom, there is some human health risk to that, and there's some great literature out there, particularly from the Muskoka District Watershed Council, that has some great photos to make sure that you know when you actually need to be staying away from the water and calling the spills hotline, which is what we're reacting to today as some of those calls. We are having our open house, unfortunately, it'll be the end of August, but we will be having it in your watershed, and folks could come to that and have a conversation, interact with people. But I'd really like to work with you and the staff here at the township to figure out how we can get information to your residents more readily, if there is a way to do that around what to be looking for and some of the ways to reduce impact when you're up.
Okay, thank you. Can I? We should be talking about whether budget claim as opposed to getting too deep into the murky waters. So related to budgets, you said you did something around Macy's Bay. I'd be interested in the stats about that, but perhaps of equal importance, you are probably aware that there is a pending new project that may go in Macy's Bay that may have an enormous impact on the environment. It would be really helpful to have before and after stats, and I think that we would want to entertain a fairly comprehensive sampling program in and around Macy's Bay area, so we know clearly what the before state is, and then in future years, we would be able to monitor the after state. Can I have more questions? But I'll pause for now, thanks.
councillor Cooper.
Thank you for the presentation, and just, first of all, would like to echo the comments with respect to testing versus remediation. I don't think that's the first time that question's been asked, and so I'm going to reinforce it again. If we could get some suggestions from you as to how to remediate a little more and test a little bit less, that would be, I think, helpful. But in addition, what I would like to see is, while I'm giving consideration to this amount, could you provide us over the next few weeks with the last five years of support that we have given to SSEAs so that we can put it into context? I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
councillor Jarvis. councillor Yanko, do you have your hand up?
Yeah, let me have it.
Okay, thank you.
Just a question over jurisdiction. You have, I'm looking at a couple of maps here, and you're showing a map that gives you the sub, you call that again, the boundary for your watershed that includes basically just the water. Let's get to that one. There's a lot of stuff to read here, by the way.
Is that a good thing?
Sure. Your sub watershed boundary is one line, and then your jurisdictional line seems to, the reason I'm asking is because I represent the island community pretty much north of what appears to be your jurisdictional boundary, and I'm just curious to know exactly what's what. You've got a line that runs through Bosley Island and then over to tiny township, but then you include islands that are north of that. The reason I ask is, how much water testing would you be in authority to do out in real open water as opposed to what you show as open water being North, South Bay, Honey Harbor, when in my mind, that's not even close to open water? And so the question is jurisdiction and what areas you actually do cover.
Through your worship, so just to clarify, you're asking where exactly the line is relative to jurisdiction?
Yes, please.
Are you asking for a specific community if it's in or out, or?
Not community. I'm looking at the township of Georgian Bay, one of the maps on your, I can't remember which page it is, but it indicates islands to the northwest of Bosley that are included in your jurisdiction, yet you're, there's a line as well that is significantly south of that.
So currently, we sample within the financial feasibility of what we do, right? So that, well, it's true, so, yeah, so to be able to, you know, if we want to entertain moving beyond the line we currently have, we are certainly in a position we could have, we are certainly in a position we could do that. We would probably have to think about, I mean, we'd have to go back to the person we have that we use as a boat captain and see if that's something that we could fit in. Right now, our sampling takes us a full day to do from Penetang over to this area and back, so that would certainly be something we, we'd have to consider within a work plan, but it's, if it's something that was a request, we would, we would look to do that.
Okay. It's just a matter of jurisdiction more than anything else. I'm thinking of Lake Water, Lake, Lake Partner Program, which is, has citizens doing water testing, and I'm, you know, I'm part of that program. And then M&amp;R obviously is doing testing as well. So how do you tie in and what are the synergies, I guess, potential synergies involved in harnessing the power of the local community in that respect and the M&amp;R as well?
So through your worship, M&amp;R doesn't do the water quality work, Ministry of Environment does, on the Great Lakes in particular and within a limited range. They unfortunately are also in a position of not being able to do as much as they've been able to do. Our understanding, Aish and I had a recent visit to talk to their Great Lakes unit to see where we could do more work together, and they unfortunately aren't even able to put some of their boats in the water this year. So they have to very particular, I mean, they look at all of the Great Lakes, so they're not going to likely be up here, like, for instance, in this, this fiscal year. Lake Partners Program, which you said you're part of, voluntary, is an awesome program, and if there's a way to encourage more folks to do that, we'd certainly be willing to help do that as well. That data all goes into Ministry of Environment for them to analyze and help look at what's actually going on. That would be a way certainly to expand where we're getting data from.
Thank you. Okay.
Councillor Reankel.
I just wanted to respond to some of the, some of the questions and concerns that councillor Hazelton had. I think of the valid concerns, I, I think we probably could work with the SSEAs and possibly have a remedial workshop on South Bay, North Bay sometime in the next year or so, especially if they get the, the data available from last year and make it all available. But there is, having a background in that particular area, there is only limited things we can do. I know from the township point of view, all we can do is, is look at planning regulations and septic inspection, and I don't know if we completed our septic inspections for both North Bay, South Bay, because that's something that we can physically do. But basically, it comes down to what the problem is, South Bay. North Bay is historical pollution over the years, and that isn't going to go away. We can monitor, and we want to make sure that we monitor sufficiently enough that we can predict what's going to be happening in the way of algae blooms in future and, and inform our individuals. But one thing people can do is shoreline protection, and that's probably the most useful thing we can do, but for, for those two areas. So I think we need to have a workshop on that and look at remedial action that we can do, but from the township point of view, there's very limited things that we can do, but I think from the public point of view, there's, there's quite a bit that can be done. I don't know exactly what SSEAs can do, they haven't got any, any silver bullets to do this, but I think it's having, having a workshop and get everybody up to speed on what, what has been done, what could be done with, both from the private sector and from the township sector, and what monitoring really needs to continue down there to ensure that we, we have some kind of forecast as what might happen in those areas in future. So I think sometime maybe in the new year, something like that, after they get all the data available and give them like three or four months to prepare something, but we could have a, probably maybe in a public workshop on this whole area.
Just, if I may, your worship, just a follow-up on that. The, we, we do not have any, the resources built in with the, built within the existing budgets for remediation. Those would be on top of, they'd be special projects. In Tiny Township, which is my hometown, we've had, we have issues where SSEAs will identify, where there's definitely an area that requires remediation through the testing and monitoring, and then township would be looking at adding additional resources and coordinating that approach through the SSEAs to, to address the situation.
Councillor Hazelton. Councillor Douglas, do you have your hand up?
No, good. So the question was unanswered.
Councillor Hazelton.
Thank you. You hit the nail on the head. That's exactly what I wanted to hear. What I want to hear ideally from you is, here is the remedial program that we think you need to be engaging in, here's what it's going to cost, here's how it's going to work, and then come to us with a budget request telling us what we should be doing to fix the waters in our community, because if we don't have clean water, we don't have the use of our community. This is absolutely critical. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And that was identified through our most recent, most recent strategic plan, so it has become a priority, and we'll, we'll be bringing those recommendations forward.
Well, thank you very much for your presentation. As you can see, it's a topic of, it's of great interest. The Southeastern Georgian Bay Chamber of Commerce, or SEG Bay as we usually call you.
First, I'd like to say thank you very much for your time. My name is Nikien Kompany. I'm the president of the Southeast Georgian Bay Chamber of Commerce, and I'm also here with Sarah Reimer, our manager. In line with the letter that we have sent, we also have a small presentation just to highlight what SEG Bay is about and some of the things that we're looking forward to this coming year. So within SEG Bay, we have about 160 active members, and that is growing and counting. And you can see the variety that it spreads out over the area. So with SEG Bay, what we're about is really to help the community, better the community, whether that be to promote or be advocates for local businesses through our marketing, our education, and the government liaisons. In the coming slides, we'll go through this a little bit more in depth. As much as we have a variance of industries or businesses in the area, I think it's really important and integral to acknowledge that we have a large sector of tourism, and we are somewhat of a seasonal community. So SEG Bay, we do focus some of our attention on promoting tourism, and by way of that, we have the kiosk that's located at the Petro-Canada Station, and throughout the year, there's thousands of visitors that visit that. We man that station. We make sure the brochures, marketing material for all the local businesses are available to promote them and to ensure that there's an awareness of what's available in the area. Some of the things to acknowledge is that even though we're looking at visitors, visitors in the long term can turn into long-term residents of the area, which is what we want. We want that growth potential. We want to attract them. This next slide kind of highlights some of the events that we try to promote, to make an appearance at, to assist with. One of the things that was touched on through the Georgian Bay Hospital presentation is that we're really proud for the Georgian Bay Hospital Golf Tournament. Our vice president Fred Waring really spearheads this along with a subcommittee, and overall, as it was kind of mentioned, since 2014, collectively, we have raised 167,000 in funds. But in the past, it has, as you can see at the bottom right-hand corner, gone to some of the revisions of the rooms. But this year, we're happy to say that we approached them in terms of seeing if there's something else, another need, which they did bring up, it was those IV infusion pumps. So this year, the funds that will be raised will be directly going towards those and assisting with that. As it was mentioned, it's a huge need, so we're looking forward. That's coming up on the 13th. In the next two slides, it will highlight to us some of the ways that we promote our small businesses, whether it be through our website and assisting with a portal, or also through our social media. We work to highlight any local events, news, or things that are upcoming. And I'm happy to say that this is something this fall and winter that we are looking to revise. The website itself probably hasn't been done or redesigned in about 10 years, and we are in need of a major update. As most of you know, digital presence is kind of the way to go forward from now on. Without that digital presence, those visitors or those long-term residents that we want to attract will not be provided with the right information. So we are looking at redesigning the website and updating it. One of the items that SEG Bay has been great at every year annually producing is the Business Directory and Visitor Guide. We have about 12,000 copies that are distributed annually, and as well, the map. I can say, as a business owner myself, the map is quite popular with my customers and is an integral part. It really does a very good job of highlighting the area and what's available to them. Another way that we work within the community to promote businesses is the signs. So we have four signs that are available to our members. Those signs in the last year or so have needed updating, whether it's maintenance, that's constant regardless throughout the year, but also we've had to replace some parts. So we always work at ensuring that what our members are getting is always the best quality. Another way that we look at promoting is our Business After Five. Recently, we did one at Genova Tile, and I don't know if you're familiar with the gentleman, but he moved up here two years ago. He visited the area, loved it, decided to uproot his family and his business up here. So it was a great opportunity for him to highlight his business, and that's something the Business After Five does, and as well, it's a great networking opportunity to meet other new individuals that are coming in the area. Our next Business After Five is October 3rd at Oak Bay. One of the things that I'm very proud of this year is that we developed a liaison committee, and I feel we were an integral part in assisting with the concerns and some of the solutions for the bridge closure that happens, has, that's ongoing in Port Severn. I would say without some of the directors and their persistence, some of the meetings that were facilitated, and I will say also help from the municipality with the facilitating of that meeting that we had, most of our directors were present, and as well, most of us committed to something at that meeting, and I can gladly say that we follow through, whether that would be signage, who would be trying to get some kind of means of transportation, individually or collectively. Chamber, we have spent a lot of time on that to ensure that we can still meet the needs of the community and local businesses. So just in closing, we are a small chamber, but we're looking at making a, a big impact, and as well, the message is that we want to work with the municipality. In recent meetings, we have requested, or have had the president, your economic officer, Jennifer Schnatter, which is great because it keeps us up to date of what's going on in the municipality and as well, how we can assist. And we're also looking at getting one of your councillors back on as a non-voting member.